Code Red or emergencies as well as general updates.
Code Red, yes.
And that's, I'm sorry?
For the Code Red system, yes.
Yeah, so we can have flexibility. But however, the individual would determine whether they opt in and what type of alerts that they would receive. Okay.
Forty-five hundred. Do we have forty-five hundred phone numbers of our forty-five hundred?
No. We probably have forty-two, four thousand around there.
It's still a big number.
Yes, we have a big number of.
So you would just like text out if there's an emergency or something, you would text it out?
Text or call or email. They would have a choice.
They would choose.
Of what they would want.
I had another one that's crude, old-fashioned, but these signs that the highway department puts. Chris, do you have any idea what are those trailer mounted sign stuffs?
Well, we have a couple of them in stock and we use signs.
If we put those at the three entrances of an emergency, more people read those and know what's going on.
Well, during an emergency, you may not even be traveling. You might be locked in your home.
Well, true, true.
But it would be a nice addition, but I don't think it's.
Yeah, no, no, it's not the sole source. It has to be something else. But this deal with forty-five hundred telephone numbers, I just can't picture anybody not offering a number to receive an emergency message. I mean, that seems to me the way, best way to go with other alternatives.
Mrs. Claire, yes. If your phone is down and the internet is down, then how do you send out the notification?
Administratively, they, Code Red has the option of, they have a designed app that allows them to run off of the cellphone, which is on a different internet provider. So the app will execute, I can execute notice, however, either by community or in whole mass.
Thank you. Mr. Guy?
Thank you, Ms. Claire. I'm gonna show my aides here, but in the old days when we had problems like that, we had previously set up arrangements with the local radio or TV stations to notify all the residents in the area. They didn't have to rely on telephones, cellphones which they didn't even know when they had in those days. Have you considered that?
Yes, but I also do recall during Hurricane Irma where people had, I think half of the community had power and had internet, the other half didn't. I think Stony Brook actually was one of the later ones that didn't have power, so.
If they don't have power, they automatically know that there's a problem.
Right, but they wouldn't get the notifications from the news outlets. They don't have the ability to get the news.
I'm not trying to be funny, I'm just saying, if you don't have power, you know there's something wrong, right?
Right, right, right. But at least having notifications, we can either provide direction or.
Estimated time of return.
Mrs. Claire, however, at the same time, if you don't have power, your cellphone doesn't work.
It does.
So you're not.
It works.
Mine did not, okay? Okay, so depending, okay?
What, you're not saying, 'cause your power's out?
I'm just saying, at the same time, that you might not have the cellphone working. So therefore, you're still not gonna get, give them any.
No, and there's nothing that's gonna really be foolproof. Some, I think that other counties have had that same question, and they typically say to keep one of those landline phones available if you have one, but it.
Oh, so this.
So your recommendation is to do the Code Red and not to convert for in-house software?
Right. I'm just providing information so you can see how the different systems compare.
And tell me again, I'm sorry if it was on one of those, what is our initial, what's our initial cost and then reoccurring?
It's an annual cost of forty-five hundred, so there's no set of fees, there's no cost to start the system. They do the GIS mapping, they set up the website, so that's already included in the annual fee.
And then the reoccurring cost would be what?
The same, forty-five hundred.
No, no, I mean, is there any additional fees for usage, any restrictions on volume?
In lieu of an emergency.
Yeah, so it's unlimited use for forty-five hundred annually, that's a good deal.
Unlimited emergency, unlimited texts and email for general purposes. Phone calls were maxed at twenty, twelve thousand.
And even think about this too, you know, for our events that we have, tree lighting, meetings.
It's less than fifty cents for ERUs.
If you opt in for general notifications, I mean, we could, there's a ton of uses for this.
Mrs. Claire? Yeah, how about, will they sell off any of this information to anybody? That's also a problem.
Well, that's, this was one of the advantages because we're not maintaining the data, and that's why, that's a big selling point. Code Red is the one maintaining the opt-in information. We don't see it, so if.
And it's private.
Right. So it's my understanding, based on, we also had this conversation with the county, that because the information is provided to a third-party vendor, that information on their website is not given to us. So like our billing system, the information, we've provided us your phone number, your contact information, that would be subject to public record because that's not a.
Well, and there's, also there's this, there's a separate exemption for information provided for notifications, emergency notifications. Now, there's a separate exemption for emergency notifications that applies to general informational notifications.
That's right. But needless, that's still maintained on the Code Red system? We're not. Where the other, the text plans as you go, the separate third-party vendors and the in-house software, we're have, I'm having to maintain that data. I'm having to collect it, track to see who is opted in, who is not, and that's what I'm currently doing now, trying to track who has irrigation, water only. So it's a lot, it takes us a lot of time. Typically, when I have to send out a boil water advisory, it takes, it can take up to thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, just to put the data together in order to send it, so.
Mr. Guy, you have a question?
I did, thank you. Have you taken into consideration the Pelican Preserve, those that are not on your water system?
The Code Red system would be mapped to who we have in place. So Lee County also uses Code Red, and City of Fort Myers would fall under that.
So I think the question is, could we include Pelican Preserve?
Yes, we can distribute the enrollment website page, and they can enroll.
Yeah, so we would include Pelican even though they're not, water notices and things like that, they would just, we would map them out.
Right, we'll map them out.
Yeah. That's a, that's a good point.
A separate opt-in authorization for people that don't get water bills directly from the district.
Currently, we have half of Pelican because the product mapped in, would be mapped into our section, so I would have to go back and adjust the mapping so that includes all of Pelican.
So.
So what's the next step for this?
Okay, so I kinda wanted to provide some information on how the opt-in process works.
I think we're good on, we just need approval.
The only caveat that we, I just wanna make sure I communicate, is that we're under Lee County, and Lee County Emergency Management System uses Code Red. Now there, I've been told by Code Red, not directly from Lee County, that they're looking to phase out of Code Red and possibly go to the State of Florida notification system. But Code Red hasn't received a final cancellation from Lee County. There is due to expire in October. So when an individual opts into our system, they are automatically opt in to Lee County's emergency response. So if Lee County Sheriff issues an alert because they had recent crime in the area, harbor, brewery, or whatever.
Where do you get those?
Yeah. You will continue to get those, but if you are not currently registered, you would get those as well. So one thing we would do is on the enrollment page, we would obviously provide a disclaimer showing that if you enroll, you will automatically enroll for Lee County notifications as well. So there's an option to opt out. You can email us, and we can forward that email to get that, if you wish not to receive Lee County notices. The other option is, the Code Red system does come with a mobile app for residents, and I've included some images there. And the app is designed so whenever you sync your phone to your location, it will show you any alerts that are pending, so it travels with you. So if you go to City of Marco Island and you stay at a hotel, and there's a line break on the street you're in, and they issue an alert, your phone will notify you if you have your settings set that way.
So what, what are you asking of the board in this?
I just wanted to make you aware that you will also get notifications from other counties or communities that have Code Red. That's the purpose of their app.
But you need, you're looking for approval for the board, right?
I'm just giving you information about the app, that's all.
Chris, do you need approval for this?
Oh, we brought this up for discussion and see if the board wanted to pursue it, and then we'd come back to the formal contract.
I just didn't want to have issues if people were bothered by the fact that they get notices from Lee County. So the only way to avoid that is to either have them make them aware to opt out or disable the app. So I think having the app is a benefit, so that's the way we would go, have them opt in and disclaim, put a disclaimer that they will automatically be included with Lee County's.
What do we need to do to advise you to move forward with the Code Red? I guess that's.
We'll come back a later day if the board's favorable with this, bring, you know, the contract, implement it. And one thing, it's when you have an issue with boil water notice, it might not be any wide, it might only be one street. We don't wanna send out a mass notification, everybody with Code Red, we can tailor it to an area.
Yeah, I think if the board, and I'll look from side to side, if the board's in agreement to bring back the contract for review and approval.
I don't think we're gonna have that, the Code Red system, we have to find out on that.
We're working on it.
One more last one.
Go ahead.
Are you not at home hesitant about this Code Red since Lee County's pulling out?
No, I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. During the test phase, you know, I didn't realize that we would get Lee Counties as well. So you're getting Lee Counties from, notices from Lee County Sheriff's Department. So if they send a message at seven in the morning that an elderly Alzheimer's person is missing in Estero, you know, you're gonna get that notice. So the only alternative, if they were not happy with that, is just be to email us and say you didn't wanna opt out of Lee County notices. But other than that, I am on board completely with moving forward with the Code Red.
I was talking about Lee County opting out of Code Red entirely.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I have the Florida system.
I do not have confirmation yet on that.
It won't affect us being on Code Red, if that's what your concern is.
But don't you think we ought to all be on the same one as much as possible?
I don't know how that works, 'cause.
Can you call Lee County Emergency Center there?
I, I'll try.
Oh, you're trying?
Yeah, but they haven't responded.
I'll say this, Bill and Brad are beginning alerts from only here. If they're going to all Florida, I don't wanna know about what's going on in Walton County or Estambia County up in Peneo. I'm more concerned about what's happening in Lee County. So if they're going to a statewide notification system, Lee County is, I don't know that we'd wanna be a part of that anyway. That's statewide.
I don't think there's some additional benefits by having our own system. With some of the general notifications, because what do we hear, people, they're not aware when we have stuff, and I think it just gives us additional capability. So.
So you'll bring the contract back?
Actually, we're already working on it.
Okay.
With the company. It was the advantages of it and the efficient cost of it, for that, we did just a purchase order to start with.
So this was just really informational to let the board know this is the direction they're going?
And the impetus was really boil water notice and incidents that happen in the community, be able to tailor it to different geographic areas.
Well, that forty-five, one of those charts had forty-five hundred contacts, we're going to be more like eight thousand or nine thousand contacts, would price double?
Well, if we.
Because if we include all the Pelican Reserve, we got about nine thousand ERUs.
That was for the in-house software.
Okay.
Well, the forty-five hundred dollar price range is based on what we estimate just for Gateway. But if we do include Pelican, and that's another.
Twenty-four, twenty-five hundred probably.
Twenty-five hundred, man.
Twenty-five hundred. They wouldn't receive emergency notifications. They would, I mean, I'm not sure if we wanna send them all the notifications regarding Gateway. So I can't, I can't answer that. I would have to go back to Code Red to see how much more.
You get a good six or seven hundred of that twenty-five hundred that are on Gateway's utility.
I would have to go back to Code Red to see how much more the expense would go to.
Let's see, when they, when they call contacts, do they consider each data entry of contact as an email address, one contact, a text another contact, so a phone number, another contact? So if I give them three, I'm, I as an individual, am eating up three of those six thousand contacts. I mean, so, six thousand people could have eighteen thousand contacts.
It could be eighteen thousand contacts.
I don't think that's.
No, no.
That's always asked.
One contact.
One contact would just be one contact, one, a message would be three.
So that would be your preference?
So that's three messages per one contact.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
And then you, as a contact, you would specify, here's, here's, here's how I wanna be contacted, you know, I just text only, or here's my email.
But if you do all three, it's considered one.
One contact, but three.
Three separate messages.
Three separate deliveries. But it's unlimited, so it doesn't matter.
If the price is premised upon contacts, or not.
Yeah.
The price of the contract is based on the number of contacts.
Right, and so if the contacts, if I'm one contact, I give them four different.
Phone numbers.
Information, that's always still one contact.
But if it's you and your wife, that's two contacts.
Correct.
Not EE.
Right.
And then if my children, yeah, really.
They, they view the contacts as a property address, so.
Okay.
We anticipate, and we don't really anticipate that all forty-five hundred homes are gonna enroll year one, there's usually an adoption rate. That occurs pretty often. But.
I got one, I call my drunk moose tie for Christmas. Lights around, I call my drunk moose tie.
Oh, yeah, everybody's like.
Okay, now we're waiting on Chris. Chris?
Last two here.
Chris.
There he is. Found him, tracking down him.
Okay, I've called a meeting back to order, and we have one last item on the agenda, and that is the policy review of the toral plans.
Sure, I'll address this at the last meeting we had, a rather lengthy discussion about laterals, the toral policy and Gateway. And where had been left off before is there was a addition to the policy manual that was never adopted by the board. There was really one version that we had, that an HOA or property association will be the contact to create, present a request to remove laterals. And as they said at the last meeting, the county staff, you can remove laterals back to the original configuration requirement. You don't need a permit to do it, and it would be removing beyond that, you would need a permit. But if you wanna go back to the levels established by the development order and what those requirements are, there's no county permit to do it. So really, we're just looking at two things from a policy standpoint from the board. This is the amended one, where it allows an individual property owner to make a request to the board on the lake. They're, they're both fraught with some problems. Individuals on lakes might have different ideas on how they like it, some people might like them in their backyard, some might not, so we'd have a whole hodgepodge. And then when you get into the contractor, how do you tell them, oh, this house stopped, this house you don't? Some HOAs would like that, and some would rather not have the HOA involved in it. So it's really, really a policy matter for the board. There's also that third policy is you don't even take requests, and the board owns the lakes, and they give a direction, and they manage what goes on in the lakes. It could be an individual coming to the board making requests, but I don't think there's an easy answer for this one.
And I know we had one person signed up that wanted to speak on this item.
Sure. And Avery Demick with Hampton Park, and he's with their ponds group, and they've been getting knee-deep in this. We've had a couple meetings over there in their clubhouse, and of course, accumulating with the workshop we have with the board. Avery?
Thank you.
Do you have five minutes?
Well, I have not seen the policy, or the proposal. I think Ed has a proposal. Did someone read that, that's gonna be added? Again, I would appreciate hearing that.
Sure, well, it's right here, and it's basically the same as what was considered by the board, we just amended it, so instead of, as you see, the HOA or property association is, it struck out, and it just says property owner.
Okay.
So it, there was a policy the board didn't adopt, that was on the table, the HOA or property management, and so we have two versions, the HOA management company and individuals.
All right, I'm Avery Demick from Hampton. I am on the Stormwater Subcommittee and Lakes, Stormwater Subcommittee, and turns out, and I'm also got involved with laterals four months ago, and that was sort of something new to me, but I've studied it, I'm an engineer slash IT manager background, so I'm able to pick some of this stuff up pretty quickly. After Irma, I got involved with the lakes and reformed a committee. We found all sorts of problems with our stormwater flow. This is not laterals, but I wanna just tell you where I've been on this. We've been around the lakes numerous times, in fact, Elle and I and Chris have walked the lakes, and I think Ed and I, if Ed remembers, we went around those lakes last fall. And also, I have done a study on the lakes, in fact, weekly study measuring the height of the water during the wet season, every week, at certain specific spots, and Chris has that study. And that was just before the installation of the new solar readers, what do you call this?
Automated water level.
Solar what?
Automated water level.
Yes, the solar automated water levels were put in. So now I don't have to do that anymore. But it was interesting to see what was going on, and I even walked the high school property. And did you know there's no berm across that east side of that property? Supposed to be a berm, and all that water's supposed to head southeast. Well, that water was coming toward Hampton Park. FYI. I talked to some people over there at Magnolia also in that regard. So that's the background that I bring you, okay? I have some knowledge, but I don't, I don't wanna be an expert in laterals. But it turns out, I've learned some things, and I'm not an expert in laterals, okay? Please, don't expect so. But here's some things I've learned, and I'm sure you may know some of this, and you could tell me to move on, but as everybody knows, laterals are necessary. The main necessity is to meet water quality standards of the council, okay? Where you place them and how you do it, a couple variations we've seen, but that water quality is the one that has to be met most importantly, and Elle takes care of that with the county folks, and I forget if they do it monthly or what the standard is there. Laterals have four to five reasons why they're there. Does everyone remember the reasons? I don't have to go through those again, right? Anybody want me to go through those? For, okay. I won't if you don't need it. But overriding all of those, of course, is the clean water. You've seen problems with dirty water in different places, I think Silver Lake had a problem, I forget who else. But you've seen that, you've seen the cost of fixing, repairing some of that. I don't know the details, but I know it was expensive from what I heard. And of course, aerators are necessary for oxygenating the water. Fountains do not do that job, okay? So I have some information for you, a handout from the county website on laterals, do you wanna have one of those? Right here. Real quick, just pass these down if you want one. It shows picture, pictures of some of the lakes that they describe in there, that they are interested in us having it that way. And I just, I don't mean just Hampton Park, I mean, any lake that's constructed for housing purposes, here's what it's supposed to look like, and here's the general guidelines, not the codes specifically, just general pictures, right? You've seen that, or there it is right on the website, anybody can get out that. And if you notice, those laterals surround the entire banks of those. Now, the reason I say that is because one of the contentions at Hampton Park, I'll go into that now at this point, is that okay? Go to Hampton, any questions so far?
Avery, you're down to one minute unless the chair.
We had, we had South Florida Board of Management in at the last board, they gave a whole presentation on.
Right, I was here, I was here for that.
Yeah.
So here we are, Hampton Park. The DO required, was signed in 2006 by the county. Lots of things have changed since then, I've been told that by the county people. I did not get the itemization of those changes because I don't wanna know them. All I wanted to do is hear that fact, and hear the fact that it affected our DO at Hampton Park as well. So anyway, the difference, or the problem at hand is whether to interpret the DO directly as it stands, and if you remember, it was for a particular lake, say two thousand feet in perimeter, it had four sections of laterals described in the, in the maps. Well, laterals are not like electrical systems of a house. Electrical systems and the design has to be right there. You can't move stuff around, you can't have different size wires in there, has to be, well, laterals are environmental. You have some ranges of things to cover to, that allows you to move different things. But what happened at Hampton Park was, was this, of course, Lennar didn't do it right at first, tried to turn this thing over, they were April or, I don't know when it was, or the year before, the fall. And anyway, one of the reasons that it didn't occur properly is because they didn't do the laterals. Well, the county code officer and Lennar worked out an agreement, because they looked at the DO and said, this won't work with the codes, with the codes as they are today. You won't get clean water, you won't get the bank, the, you won't secure the banks from erosion, and you won't get the algae clean up that day, okay? You won't get the.
What is your opinion on the prospect of individuals being able to come?
Well, well, let me finish this story real quick, then I'll go to that one, I've got that next. So anyway, the, the laterals were distributed, okay, around the lakes, and that's why we have them all the way around, every homeowner. Today, they're beyond what they're supposed, supposed to be eight to ten feet, okay? I talked to the sprayers of these, of aquagenics, and that's what they said they're gonna be. I don't know that we have maintenance set up for that here though, for aquagenics in Hampton, do we?
Yes.
Okay, so that's coming up, is to spray those weeds, weeds, I misspoke, laterals that extend beyond eight to ten feet, that will satisfy a lot of people at Hampton Park, okay? So getting to the change here. So getting to the change here. First of all, in that regard, do customer, water service customers have the option to opt out of water? You don't have to answer that. Can they, can they complain about the streetlight in the street and shut that off? Well, that's because they don't own them, it's community owned, it's a service that's required. The same is for litorals around the lakes. You own it, you folks own it.
Yeah.
And so aquagenics has...
And Avery, I hate to tell you, but the time is five minutes on the clock.
Is that right?
You're at nine minutes, and if you want to get to the point, but at ten, you're gonna be off the floor.
The last point I'll make is, is, is this. This all started with one individual's complaint. Now, there may be a few others, but the ones, people, there were eight or ten people that contacted Ed about this. Well, when those eight or ten people were contacted by me, to give them the full story on litorals, they all retracted that need to have litorals removed.
So you're in favor of litorals, as much as you can?
Litorals maintained properly, yes, around the lakes, okay? And I guess thirdly was, I talked to the art environmentalists, all of these people at the county, four or five of them, I'm serious, four or five contact. They all said litorals could not be planted in the sections as designed in the, in the DO, even though it was in the DO. Okay, you understand? Whoever approved that DO made a big mistake.
Okay. The person who approved that DO is the person who was at this meeting.
Yes.
Oh, well, what I didn't say was, no, I'm serious, one more thing about that, Ed. They said this, because it didn't meet the current codes, that, that DO, they did an upgrade. It was, seriously, this is the word they used, an upgrade to the litoral distribution. That's, and that upgrade would meet the current codes. That upgrade was the distribution, and upgrades do not require a, what's called an as-built. You know what an as-built is, attached to a se... It did require that because any upgrades to an approved DO do not require an as-built change.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? You got that?
Thanks, thank you.
Now, I guess it's for us to discuss. So you said that you were gonna probably need to leave, so I'll let you go first.
Yeah, I mean, my whole policy on litorals is, one, we have a standard. That standard states, I mean, a lot of things, but in essence, twenty-five percent litorals when...
That's the county minimum.
Right, but it's still, that's our... Right, that's, that's what our standard, that's what it says in our, in our guide, in our surface water system management standard. When the DO is silent, and I talked about this when South Florida Water Management is here, when it's silent, or if the DO does not require litorals, I think our policy was, we would have the, we should revert back to our standard, which is twenty, twenty-five percent. Now, in the instance where there's a pre-existing lake where the DO is either silent or it does not require litorals, I think we, the district, could determine that we could adhere to that twenty-five percent if it benefits the, the water quality or it addresses a specific need. If there is no specific need, if the water quality is good, I don't think we would have to necessarily go in there and do that, especially unless, you know, there was, you know, significant complaints. So for me, I think it's very simple in one aspect, whereas we have a standard, it's twenty-five percent. That's what we adhere to. If the DO is silent, then our twenty-five percent should be the standard.
Okay, that controls.
Right, that's the, that would be the control. If...
That's regulatory standard.
That's regulatory standard. If, if there's a pre-existing lake that has no litorals, because it was not required, the district could choose to come in and put up to twenty-five, or up to twenty-five percent litorals in that lake if there was a water quality issue. If there's no issue, we could choose not to do it. If there's a lake where litorals have exceeded twenty-five percent, whether that's thirty, forty, fifty percent, I think the district would reserve the right on an individual case to determine if, to, to draw that back to whatever the percentage is, not to exceed less than twenty-five percent due to, you know, whatever the reason is. Now, if it's simply the, the community saying, I don't like the aesthetics, we'd have to, you know, account for that, but the minimum would be twenty-five. But if it grew to thirty or thirty-five percent, if it was maintaining a consistent quality in the lake, I think we would probably have to determine that we would not do anything.
And I think the issue too is, originally, when this addendum was brought to the board, it was the HOA or property association that would request for changes in the litorals. And then somehow, when it came back to us most recently, it became every individual that lives on the lake would be able to come and request litorals being removed. I see that as opening up a can of worms and being not here for staff.
I mean, honestly, I think it's all inclusive, because you could have a property, you could have one property owner that has an excessive amount of litorals on their property, and it may be an issue to them. You could have the HOA come to the board, say, well, as a collective, we have, in our community, one side of the lake is in, is within the purview of our HOA, we have issues because it's, you know, the majority of the litorals are on our side and it's not on the other side, whether it's golf course side, or if it's on the FPNL easement. I don't, I don't want to get caught up in who has the right to contact the district. I think it could be the HOA, the property association, or the property owner. I think the issue is not who requests, the issue is what is the standard we're gonna adhere to, and how are we gonna go through the process of determining when, when we would go above and beyond our standard, whether that is when the DO is silent or litorals are not required, or if the litorals exceed the specified twenty-five percent. I don't want to get caught up in who this middle party is.
And remember, when Lee County was here, they said that, that twenty-five percent is a minimum.
It's a minimum, right.
They're, it's anticipated that plants are gonna spread, and there is no maximum. Jessica actually stated that at that meeting, there's no maximum. So it comes down to the district owns the lakes. And I know that that's, that's something that's gonna take, I think, educating the people that live on lakes, is that, yes, that's a benefit for you to look out your back door and that lake is there, or that stormwater pond is there, however...
Sorry, these two photos were taken yesterday on my lake. Lake number three of Hampton Park.
The stormwater ponds are just exactly that. Their stormwater ponds are not recreational lakes. They weren't built to be recreational lakes, like people come from up north, come down here, and they think, oh, wow, I've got a recreational lake. No, it's a stormwater pond. And if litorals are removed, if we make that determination, I think that whoever is requesting it, whether it's an individual or it's an HOA, they need to understand that if bank erosion takes place and requires repair, or if the litorals need to be planted back, that whoever makes that request, whether it be an individual or an HOA, they're gonna be financially responsible for the repair.
Right, but I, like in this case, I would say if, I'm sorry, what is your name?
I'm Justin, I'm sorry.
Justin, okay. If Justin were to come to the board and say, I'd like for the district to look at litorals on Lake Three, if we determine that the water quality is, you know, is fine, that the, this excessive amount of litorals has no justification of health, because when I look at it, this amount of litorals, in my opinion, could be restricting, you know, water flow, which could be causing, you know, a lot of different problems. Like, this would be something I think we would review, and this is the, this is what I, you know, could be considered excessive. Justin, is that what your kind of deal is? Do you think this is excessive?
This is lake number four, you're gonna notice a tree that was planted, that's leaning over, it's been like that for about nine months. That's another picture of a length of litorals that run all the way around.
I think for the record, maybe, the gentleman needs to sign up to speak.
Yeah, absolutely, I understand. You want me to sign up?
Yeah, yeah, so that we've got you for the record.
But this is where I think, this is more challenging, is when litorals exceed, and I would say if twenty-five percent is the minimum, we have no maximum, but this is where we're gonna run into a problem, is when is, when is too much enough?
I mean, these are just some photos I quickly snapped. Yesterday morning, were two, and then yesterday evening, I did some drone footage, or some drone shots.
Will you go ahead and give us your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Justin Kershaw. I live at one-two-five-zero-three Kempwood Avenue, Hampton Park, Lake Number Three. Yeah, I've been the concerned citizen that has watched them grow and multiply and fill the lake, and spoke to neighbors and spoke to concerned folks in the community in regards to this. And I get the story, the only, I mean, one that really keys in is the guy three doors down, you know? I used to enjoy the lake. Now, since all these weeds have taken in, which you see where it's like ten, twelve, thirteen, fifteen feet deep, you can't enjoy the lake no more. And I, and I know they're just stormwater lakes, I totally understand that. A lot of that you see in the photos is view, it is aesthetics. It doesn't look pleasing, is what I'm, I guess is the word I'm looking for. I'm just gonna fill out this card as I'm standing up here, if you guys have any questions.
Kathy, did you...
Okay, yes, I think the problem is that, and you mentioned it, and Doug mentioned it, first of all, people are coming up from, coming down here from north, and they see their, their lakes, these are not lakes, but these are ponds, right?
Sure.
And, right, and they're, and the litorals are there for a purpose. And if you've lived down here and you've seen the litorals, you know that they're there for a purpose, and you're used to them, and they don't bother you. But if people are coming from the north, they're not used to that site, and they're not, it isn't a pond, it isn't a lake that you're gonna look at towards aesthetic beauty. It has a purpose, and that's it. And I do agree that what Doug says, if it's twenty-five percent is the minimum, twenty-five percent, and there is no maximum. And we do own the ponds, and I think we should have the say of what is, because we're the ones who have to pay the consequences if the water quality goes down.
Or if there's bank erosion.
But I do believe that there's, you know, if I was on that lake, I wouldn't be that happy, and I, I've been on that lake before, my house in Pinecrest, on the, at PNL easement. The litorals got ridiculous, and you, I mean...
It's unsightly.
It was, not only was it unsightly, I mean, we would fish in that lake, and you couldn't fish in there when it got really thick. So I do believe there might be an excessive amount. The problem is, how do you define what's excessive? And when you go to cut it back, does that mean, you know, Justin put in requests, and we're gonna cut it back in front of his house, which means we're gonna leave it in the neighbors? So that's where the challenging piece is. It's not a, that I agree or disagree with you, I think aesthetics is important. There is a function to the litorals. The problem is, if you, when you, when you have a regulation on a minimum, that's one thing, but if there's, you know, if it's excessive, when you gotta cut that back, how do we determine who gets cut back and who doesn't?
I mean, you kinda almost want to resolve or revert back to somewhat to the DO and the placements of them. When the stormwater ponds were originally designed and the DO was put together, there were certain sections where these were deployed, and that was the minimums. If you look at what they came to, now, if these lakes had been maintained from day one all the way through the, the two thousand seven, two thousand eight recession, if they had kept the maintenance up on these lakes and into ten, eleven, twelve, and on and on, we would be a lot closer to the minimums than we are today.
Well, and you understand that the minimums that were planted originally, the whole idea in South Florida Water Management, Lake County were here, that, that the last meeting said it's anticipated those are going to spread. It's desired that they spread. It's not to maintain them only in these little bitty sections that were originally planted.
Correct, absolutely. Now, if we, but if we can keep them, like, what'd you see in the photos? I, I mean, that was the whole purpose of the photos, was to, again, show you how they look. And they're not, they're just, I mean, they are serving a purpose, I understand that. They're not, aesthetically, they're not looking...
I'm gonna ask Chris about this, because I know you've been out there and you've talked to the different people in Hampton Park, because currently, that's where there's the complaint.
And I've been out there a few times, and there's a lot of flexibility with litorals, and I talked to Justin, because down where the structure is on the lakes, you know, you can get almost all the required coverage down on that end where there's no homes behind it. And so you could basically accomplish that litoral, you know, coverage that you would need a little beyond, and beyond the maximums. And when I looked at, at Justin, I said, well, we could go back to what the original areas were, you know, mark out the distances and see how much coverage we have, but if we could trim them back and really just to get that eight to ten foot width, and then just behind the homes where they were originally required, or if we needed to move some of them down to the corner, you can put trees in, and you put one tree in, and it counts for under litorals. So there's different ways to approach it. And actually, my biggest concern was when Jessica was here too, and she says, well, your water quality benefits from it, that after about, I think it was thirty-five percent coverage, the benefit decreases, or it isn't as great, it becomes more helping stabilize the bank. My, my bigger concern was, well, we're maintaining it, they weren't maintained properly, there's gonna be a cost to go back and trim them back to that eight to twelve feet and put them in those locations beyond what our regular maintenance regime. But in some ponds, people love them all the way around, other ponds, people don't.
And I think it's a matter, again, a matter of education. My concern is, is that right now, these litorals are helping to stabilize the bank. If we remove them, and then there's bad erosion, then somebody has to pay for that to be repaired. And if, if it happens because the litorals are removed, I don't think that that should be the district that has to pay for that repair when it's being requested by an individual homeowner.
I would agree with that, absolutely, that if a homeowner requests that litorals be removed, and then somehow there's some lake bay erosion, I believe that the cost should fall back on the homeowner because they're the one that requested it. I agree.
And actually, in all Hampton Park, the only issue that we have or that's come in surface with residents is on Ju, you know, Justin's lake, and he's brought up the point, and I think we can accommodate, you know, and find out what the cost would be, but he's not asking to remove all of them, he's just asking they be trimmed back and maintained properly.